Okay, good evening, friends and neighbors. Welcome to another session of the State and City Council. It is August fifteenth in the year 2022, and we're going to go ahead with with the meeting on a nice, warm Monday evening. Please join me in a flag salute, please. Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor-
Who speaks?
Counselor Ort.
Oh, there she is.
I just wanted to say that I have had contact with members of the community regarding the cybercell and service centers and products.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
As have I.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I have also-
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty, as have I.
As have you, okay. Counselor McDonald. Living in splendid isolation? No, no, that's fine. Thank you. Okay. Duly noted. Under public comment, we have one that I got here, Greg Pease. Would you like to talk to the council?
Yeah.
If you do, come up to the table there, please. Take a seat. Make sure that little green button is lighted.
Hello?
And tell us who you are.
I'm Greg Pease. I've lived in Staton since 1999. Just concerned about the-
Address, please.
145 West Virginia Street, Staton, here.
Okay, for the record, thank you. Go ahead.
Just concerned about what seems to be the lack of enforcing the laws, the homeless that are loitering in areas where we kick kids out for riding skateboards, just the unsafe, you know? I've raised kids in this town, and I'm on my second group of kids I'm raising, and I don't feel safe letting her out of the house, going walking around. When the older kids was, you never had concern, had too much of a concern. We have people sleeping in the park here. We have people, the park closes at 10 o'clock. Why aren't we enforcing laws? We've had people arrested for stealing firearms, driving vehicles without licenses, and they were released to their car within a couple hours. Weren't charged, car wasn't towed. Why aren't we enforcing the laws? I mean, we need to do something to, you know, make the community better like it used to be.
Can't disagree with that. How to do it?
Well, have the, have the police officers, you know, make contact with these people loitering in the, at the O'Reilly's parking lot, sleeping there. I mean, they're sleeping right next to the old canned food store, whatever the building next to O'Reilly's. Walking over to Exstapa last week with my 85-year-old dad. There's two guys sleeping right there. I mean, we have police officers in this town, but, I mean, you know, they don't seem to want to prosecute, or per, not prosecute, but, you know, enforce the laws. I called about some tweakers on an industrial street, and the dispatch assumed it was just people doing people's stuff, was what I was told. Two cars with a bunch of people, a couple of people outside and a bunch of stuff over by the storage units on Locust. There's no residents there, there shouldn't have been people on the street there, but the dispatch lady said, oh, it just sounds like people doing people's stuff. Seems like our police don't want to enforce the laws or, or don't want to deal with the additional work of enforcing our laws.
Have you made contact with them?
Huh?
Have you made contact with our officers?
Yes. I had, a lady tried to break into my car, and they said, oh, she's harmless, she just has a mental problem. I mean, the officers know these people by name that are running around our town. My daughter worked, does personal care for an elderly lady. Somebody walked into her apartment, that just walked in, this person that's no longer in our town, apparently, who, who's moved out, but there's people like this in our town all over. The homeless underneath the bridge, that area's closed, it's restricted, why are we allowing them down there? You know? If, if we arrest somebody, let's take them to Marion County and drop them off. If they want to release them in Marion County, great. You know? The law, I'm sure the police know where the drug houses are, sit in front of the drug house for 15 minutes a day every now and then. You don't have to harass, you know, but just the presence in front of these houses. I mean, we know where these, where the problems are.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else need to say anything at this point, under your comments from the public? Okay. Let's go on. The consent agenda for this evening is an approval of July 18th meeting, regular city council meeting session minutes, and a resolution number 1041, authorizing the city manager to sign safety and security contract with Pixel Security. How would you, the folks, like to deal with the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty.
Yes?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
A second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to end a second, to approve the consent agenda as published. Let's go to a vote on that, Alissa Or. Record, what does that name tag say in front of you?
Oh, recorder, but-
Recorder? Interesting name.
Try to keep it original. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Counselor Hook says yes.
Passes five zero. Passes five zero.
Five zero? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, let's take off on the business this evening. A public hearing on ordinance number 1056, a comprehensive plan map and zone map attendance amendment, excuse me, on Golf Club Road, and commencement of the public hearing. And I have to read a script, and many of you probably know this by heart, but here we go. Good evening, my name's Henry Porter, I'm the mayor of the city of Staton, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is a time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 11 day 06/22, applications for annexation and comprehensive plan amendment for 11 acres on Golf Club Road. The hearing is now ocean. Thank you, open ocean. Oregon law, land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that cover certain matters relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under the Oregon Revised Statute 197.797 bracket five, is printed and available at the back counter. If you not have received one of these, you should go get one and review it prior to presiding your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes your turn to speak during the hearing. Also at the back counter is the agenda for the evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? Again, I hear none. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As the opening statement said, the hearing before you this evening is on two concurrent applications, one for annexing property into the city limits, the second for a comprehensive plan map amendment. The city's comprehensive plan currently designates this land as residential, and the application is requesting that that be amended to industrial, and along with that, upon the finalization of the annexation, that light industrial zoning be applied to the property. There is no development proposal associated with these applications, there is no change to the property proposed at this time. This is a matter strictly of annexation and comprehensive plan amendment. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant's representative to present their case, and then I will be back with the full staff report.
Good evening, Staton City Council, my name is Laura LaRocque, I'm with UDL Engineering and Land Surveying, and as Dan mentioned, I am the applicant's representative. Before you, you have our applications submitted.
Is that on?
It is on. Do I just need to lean forward a little?
Yeah, or just slide it closer.
Okay.
Okay.
How is that? Can you hear me better?
Hey, yes.
Okay, great. So my, my address is on record too in the application materials. So as the city planner had mentioned, the applicants for this property are also the owners, James and Jolene Crowther. Their request is twofold, a concurrent application for an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment, and in addition to that, the application of the initial zone designation of light industrial. As Dan mentioned, the property is currently developed with a number of different uses, all in the light industrial realm. They include storage, gravel facilities, two pre-existing residential dwellings, and some office buildings and things of that nature. Included in this annexation proposal, the comprehensive plan designation does not include any development, so this is simply just changing the jurisdictional line so that Marion County is no longer the governing body of it, that it be brought into the city of Staton, and be beholden to the development code and the municipal code for the city of Staton. There are six review criteria for an annexation application. Your planning staff has done a great summary in the memo that outlines these criteria, and they're also included in the ordinance and staff report. Essentially, most of these six criteria are pretty straightforward, so the term "objective", there's not really a different conclusions that can be drawn to these criteria. One of these objective criteria states that the property is contiguous to the city limits. This property is, it does currently touch the city limits of Staton. The other is that the site is capable of being served by public utilities. The site is not currently served by public utility, it utilizes a well and septic system, but if development was proposed or redevelopment of the site, then those city services could be provided to the, to the property. And then also says that the annexation request complies or can be made to comply with the applicable provisions of the state and local law. And I won't go too much detail because that information's already provided in the supplement application material, but the findings for that is that it does apply to those provisions. There's two criteria that are a little bit more subjective, so this is just more open to interpretation. The first of those is that the need for this annexation exists. There's detailed analysis in our applications proposal, also the staff report and the memo here before you this evening that talks about available lands in both the industrial and residential portions. So what we're looking at is a plan that projects out the next 20 years and talks about, are you going to be able to fit the needs of the community over that period of time, based on what's on the ground or what can be brought into the city limits in the urban growth boundary? The findings, in short, just suggest that the residential demand, there's quite adequately served about what is existing, and if there was an increase in growth from what was projected over this horizon, that would still be able to be satisfied without this property being designated as residential. There's also land available for industrial sectors, but there are limiting factors to what's available, and some of those are just that, you know, the timing of those. Some property owners that have industrial lands are not at this time willing to develop or want to, that public utilities are not available at the time, and there's a large, about 63 acres, stated in the memo, that includes property that's just not ready at this time to be developed. So, just saying that the need is served well for residential uses even into the future. The industrial availability of land is a little bit less, and that this would help fill the city's need in that sector. The other criteria that is a little subjective is the very last one, and it talks about compatibility of the annexation property with the character of the surrounding community. So included in the report talks about what surrounds this property. Across the street is undeveloped land that's largely used as in agricultural purposes. To the north is property in Marion County's jurisdiction, and it's used as single-family large residential lots. To the east is a stormwater detention facility that serves a residential subdivision further to the east, and to the south is an existing manufactured home. So when you're talking about compatibility, it says, can things exist without conflict, essentially? And what we would stake for this, and what's included in the application, is this property has been developed in this manner since the 70s. It predates most of the development that surrounds it today, and I'm not aware at the time of any major conflicts between these uses here. Any future development would be reviewed at the time of an application submitted, and would include things that would ensure compatibility. Typically, those provisions include buffering, landscaping setbacks, heights restrictions, everything that you could find in the development code that helps to make sure that there is compatibility between development of uses. The second part of the application is a comprehensive plan amendment. There are seven review criteria that are included for this type of proposal. I'm rather long-winded, as you can tell, but I will not run through all seven of those. Essentially, it just states that does the comprehensive plan designation, so the future designation for this property, does it fit with the policies of the community and the city, is it helping to achieve those? And the findings in the application, we feel demonstrate that they do, they meet these policies, and they will continue to do so with the designation of a light industrial zone. There has been written testimony in objection to this application. A lot of the written testimony that I have received and reviewed talks about concerns about the development of the property, such as, you know, what to do about stormwater and detention and things of these natures. And I'll just reiterate that there is no development proposal at this time. If the site was to further develop, redevelop in its entirety, or new development to occur, all those stages require review processes that would ensure that any new infrastructure bought to the site or development meets the city codes in those standings. So with that, I'll wrap up my presentation. Love to turn it over to questions, if there are any. I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Ma'am, would you share with us your understanding of the effectiveness of that detention basin to the- Be the southeast of the property?
I guess I don't understand the question. Can you repeat that?
Can you, would you share with me at least, your understanding of the effectiveness of the so-called detention basin to the southeast of the property?
Yeah, I can tell you my understanding of that facility is to serve residential development that it is adjacent to, and I'm sure in reviewing that application for the residential subdivision that was created, that that was a infrastructure that was needed to support that development.
Do you have any sense of the effectiveness or knowledge of whether it's effective or not?
It's outside the property boundaries and outside the scope of this review.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you. Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Thanks for being here. You mentioned in your testimony that you were trying to get this out of Marion County's jurisdiction, and that was also presented to us in our summary. Can you tell me what the current zoning is for Marion County for that property?
Urban transition.
And what does that mean? How's that defined?
I don't know the Marion Code definition of that zone, but my understanding of a transition zone is that it allows a transition from what the key destination in the county is, which are typically agricultural, exclusive farm use, timber, those uses, into more urban development.
Okay, so it does allow for an industrial?
Not, not that I'm aware of without a change in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Typically, Marion County, when a property is in the urban growth boundary, defers to the city's comprehensive plan, and the city's current designation is residential.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or thoughts? Okay. Thank you for now, then.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
I'll try hard to keep this brief, but I don't know if I can.
Okay.
As has been stated, you've got two applications before you, one for annexation, one for a comprehensive plan amendment, and whether the comprehensive plan amendment is approved or not will determine which type of zoning to apply to the property. So it's really three independent decisions that you have to make. One, do we annex this property into the city? Two, do we change the comprehensive plan map designation? And three, which zone to apply to the property should you choose to annex it? As I've said in every staff report regarding an annexation, the two subjective criteria that are before you, the need and the compatibility with the character of the surrounding area, are very subjective, and I believe give you wide latitude to interpret the same set of facts in a number of different ways. That being said, staff's analysis is that even though there is a lot of undeveloped industrially zoned land in the city limits, as well as other land designated industrial that's in the urban growth boundary, but not yet annexed into the city, that it's been at least 16 years since we've seen any new development in the industrial zone, and bringing this property into the city and designate it as industrial will provide the opportunity in the future for an already developed lot to see some further development. As far as the issue of compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, as the applicant's representative said, this property was developed in essentially the condition that it's in now, 40-plus years ago. It, I don't know whether there were any land use rules in effect at that time. I know there was a building code in effect at that time. I've been told that some of the larger buildings were built without the benefit of building inspections and building permits and inspections. Since the original occupant of the site moved out in the late 2000s, there's been a variety of commercial and industrial uses there. The city has had no control over what moves in because it's not within our jurisdiction. Our occasional complaints to Marion County Planning Division and Marion County Code Enforcement have been mostly ineffective, and I believe that bringing this property into the city and having it be subject to city rules and city enforcement will provide us for the opportunity, for whatever is happening there, to have less of an impact on the, the neighbors, particularly the Mobile Home Park to the south, where those large shed buildings are pretty darn close to that south property line. So with that, you've got the full staff report, you've got the draft order, I won't spend any more of your time going through the details. As was mentioned, we received two emails this afternoon, one so late that it could not be forwarded to you, I have those been, so you have those in front of you. One of the correspondence is requesting that you continue the hearing for 10 days. You certainly are within your right to do so, but you are under no obligation to do so when a neighboring property owner makes that request. If this, if that request had come from the applicant, then you are obligated by state law to grant that request. I will point out that Mr. Martinak was at the planning commission hearing. He did provide some testimony, but it was under the category of questions from the public, and my interpretation of his questions was that he was asking questions without voicing any opposition or concern, and then we received this email at whatever it was, 3:00 or so this afternoon, and he had since the July 25th planning commission meeting to get some, something down on paper and get it submitted for the record. So with that, I will wrap up. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, particularly if there's anything in the staff report or draft ordinance that I didn't cover orally, that you would like to be addressed.
Dan, quick question, do these two late emails, letters referring, referencing this hearing, do they need to be read into the proceedings tonight?
I, I don't think they need to be read aloud, unless there's someone in the audience who wants to hear them. I did, once I got here this evening and saw that Counselor Hook was not going to be here, I did forward her a copy of the second one that came in. She's nodding, so I assume that means she, she has seen it. So I think everybody who needs to know what they say has got a copy in front of them.
Okay, all right.
And the applicant has received copies as well.
Okay.
And I'm not quite sure, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know what purpose reading them would serve.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Counselor, if I could ask a question, please, of Dan? Dan, page four, paragraph two, last sentence.
Of the, of the ordinance or the staff report?
Staff report.
Okay.
It says, "These applications have been submitted in part in response to actions by Marion County to potential violations of county zoning," I'm sorry, "to county zoning." Can you elaborate on that, please?
Um, yeah, I think I was, after a number of attempts, I think I was finally successful in prodding Marion County to take some action a couple of years ago. As additional businesses were showing up, and particularly as more and more vehicles, RVs, boats, et cetera, were being stored there, that was never a use back 15 years ago, when it was a general contractor's shop and yard. I think that- I think that, without speaking for the applicant, I think that he had a choice to make of either deal with getting appropriate permits through the county or going through this process. I think that in part the county had said they would not consider permitting these types of uses unless the city had amended its comprehensive plan. So if we had to go through this comprehensive plan amendment process anyway, again, without speaking for the applicant, might as well bring it into the city.
Okay, so that's your observation.
Yes.
You don't know of any pending violations at the moment from Marion County?
I'm not aware of any open enforcement actions. I'll answer it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we're into questions from the council, so go ahead.
So a follow-up to that, Dan, if I can understand what you're saying is, over the years, the city has complained to the county about this property. And the idea is that annexing it into the city will allow us to be able to basically have more control over what's happening there with the property?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question about the complaints.
Yes, yes, please.
So there are two houses on the property, right?
Correct.
So if we change it to... I mean, what it's already, it's currently been being used for is basically light industrial. Is that what I'm understanding?
It's a mix of uses that are there.
But that's the best that would...
But that is probably the, of our zones, that is the zoning that would result in the most businesses becoming conforming uses.
Sure, okay.
The two houses that are there will become non-conforming uses. The automobile repair garage that is there will become a non-conforming use. I mean, it is a non-conforming use today.
Yeah.
And I believe, from my understanding of the other businesses that are located there, they are all businesses that would be permitted in the light industrial zone. Again, I don't want to state that I know exactly what each business is, but I've done some drive-throughs, took photos, sent them to the county, said, "Hey, look what's going on here." And essentially that resulted in us being here tonight.
Okay. And if I may, one more question for me. So this new, well, actually, there was a testimony in our packet, but then this in one of the new emails, both of whom kind of addressed stormwater issues, and the applicant representative kind of explained that. But I just want to confirm, is it because they don't have any new development happening, they don't have to do anything with the stormwater right now? Is that what it...
That is correct.
Okay. And so if they were to want to do something new, that would trigger, and that's when, okay, you have to meet these qualifications, check these boxes in order to be able to do these different, do this different development with the property?
Correct. If you turn to page 2 of 3 of the draft ordinance itself...
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yep, yep. You will see, based on a recommendation from Public Works and Engineering that was incorporated into the planning commission's recommendations to you, up at the top of page 2 of 3 of the ordinance, section 3 of the ordinance, says, "The applicant shall execute an agreement with the city to be recorded in the Marion County deed records, obligating the applicant and future property owners to construct frontage improvements and to connect the existing buildings to city utilities at such time of future development of the property." We have been working on a draft of that agreement, and it will essentially say, "Development of the property means any new building, any addition to an existing building, or the addition of any impervious surface."
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
You explained, in answering Counselor Quigley's question, you explained one of the reasons why they were submitting this application was to, was there previous dealings with the county? Is that your understanding of their kind of primary driver for submitting this application? Or was there, I guess, what's the bigger, what are they to gain in this whole process other than that, if anything?
My understanding, for what it's worth, is that's the primary driver to us being here tonight.
Okay. That's it.
The last part of your answer, Dan, the primary driver was?
Was the enforcement actions that Marion County finally began to take, and the applicant's effort to comply with them.
Okay, all right.
As I said earlier, my understanding is that prior to them issuing any type of use permit for any type of industrial use, they wanted to see us change our comprehensive plan map to industrial.
Okay.
And so if you had to go through this process for that, might as well get two birds with one shot.
Got it, thank you.
Otherwise live with a bunch of non-conforming uses, right?
Or perhaps face having them be shut down.
Ah, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Other questions or thoughts from Counselor? Counselor Hook, anything?
No, Mr. Mayor. All of my questions have been asked already by the other counselors. Thank you.
Okay, you bet, thank you. Let's see, okay, next, proponent's testimony. Those in favor of this. And thank you, Dan, for now. Proponent's testimony. Someone who wants to speak in favor of this. Mr. Crowther.
Jim Crowther. I own the property. Well, my wife owns the property. You know, until tonight, I didn't realize it was the city that was wanting things changed, I guess. For years, it's had a conditional use from the county, and I had to go back and renew the conditional use, and that's what brought me in here, is because they wouldn't redo it. They said to bring it inside the city. So we turned around, and that's the route we went. But we don't plan on changing the property. It's been this way for 50 years with Emery &amp; Sons Construction. We don't have near the impact that Emery &amp; Sons Construction had with dump trucks and excavators and trailers and stuff. We've tried to keep it very low-key and not really open to the public. People bring stuff in, drop it off, and leave. So there isn't a lot of impact at all. And like I said, we don't plan on changing it. I don't plan on developing it. I just mow the grass and keep it up, so...
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Unless, anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, thanks, for now. Anyone else? How about opponent's testimony? Anyone here who would like to raise any concern? How about additional testimony? Is there any? Is there any need for an applicant rebuttal? Anything that's been said this evening so far?
Yeah, I...
Yes?
I think Jim said it far better than I could, but I will just talk about, you know, the purpose seems to come up in conversation today. Jim addressed it, so did Dan, but to clarify to you, there are processes that he could go through, through Marion County, but it's more of a conditional use type of process, and the decision outcomes on any sort of proposal are really uncertain. So the benefit of this from a developer and owner in the future, if he does plan to do something, and again, there's no proposal, but at least the decision outcomes would be known because the development code of the city is code and would have to be met. So it's a more straightforward process for him or future owners as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How about a staff summary? Dan?
I'm not going to make a summary of what's been said, but just, you've got a draft ordinance in front of you, which, if enacted as drafted, would annex the ordinance, annex the property, amend the comprehensive plan map from residential to industrial, and sign a light industrial zoning to it. While the initial recommendation in the written staff report was to approve the applications in the first consideration of ordinance 1056, in light of these two written comments that were received late this afternoon, I believe that it is important that our findings reflect those comments and respond to them, as was done, if you looked at the planning commission's order of approval, they went through a delay process because there was testimony at the public hearing. So my recommendation to you at this time would be to approve the applications and the first consideration of the ordinance with modifications to reflect the written testimony that was received, and for us to bring back the modified ordinance to the council at your next meeting. Or for to just modify the findings and trust staff to do it right. That would... And then the other is, there was the request to hold the record open for 10 days. And again, I see you're under no obligation to do so, and Mr. Martinak has had plenty of time to submit written testimony.
There should be five or six other possibilities here, Dan.
There are other possibilities that, should you choose, those are among your options.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, close of hearing. What would you folks like to do with that? We've got a request to keep the record open, so I guess we need to do something about... Pretty close here, don't we? Where can we do that in the motion? In any motion to move on this?
Are you asking for comment, Mr. Mayor?
I, yes, before we start banging the gavel and yelling.
I don't have any reason to keep the hearing open.
We do have a request that it be kept open. Okay. Nothing there. I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we'll go to council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this? Counselor Quigley?
Mr. Mayor, my judgment on this is that the impetus behind the annexation request is because of the current situation with Marion County, and that's not a criteria for annexation in the city of state. As you heard the gentleman testify earlier about the public, just the public testimony about enforcement in our community, we are filled with the gills right now at this point with any kind of enforcement. So I do not want to see this annexed, and I don't want to change the comprehensive plan map as well, so I'm a no on this one.
Okay, all right. Other thoughts, comments here?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes?
As we listen to more and more about the houses that are around, I wanted to say that I'm actually going to abstain from voting because I went to go and kind of count the houses that are closest to this property, and I'm probably one of a couple dozen that are closest. So although I don't have any bias or conflict of interest, I just think that for the perceived conflict of interest, it'll be best for me to abstain this evening.
Okay, all right, thank you, Counselor. Other thoughts and questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So my thought on this property is, you know, what is it being currently used for in this designation best fits that, since this property's been used this way since the 70s? My only thought, and I would love to get other counselors' views on this, is, with talking with Dan, that future development, like on the other side, when we annex more property in, we can go as far as the golf course, and he said even the golf course is part of that property. And so if we put, say, we zone that residential on the other side, is it going to be kind of a odd duck-out type of situation? So I don't necessarily have an opinion on that, I just wanted to bring that to light so we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Patty?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. Yeah, so a number of things on this. I mean, to me, it's a property owner coming to us with a request, and the property owner, in addition, is trying to have his current use be approved through Marion County, and it sounds like they're not the organization that can afford that to him. Excuse me, her, because he's not the property owner, it's your wife, correct? Yeah, okay. So with that in mind, I mean, I'm sympathetic to what they're trying to do here, and they're trying to get this to remain, and I hear you about the other properties that are contiguous to it, and that concern of it being kind of a lonely island of light industrial among a bunch of residential someday, but at the same token, we have to take into account what's happening there now, and what would be most appropriate, and ultimately, what was already pointed out by Dan, be able to have that kind of control in that area with it annexed into the city. And so to me, at least, I'm going to be a yes vote on these various things, and incorporating the public comment into the findings, but that's where I come down on it.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Counselor, no?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with Counselor Patty. I think we can easily justify whether the applicant's specific goals meet that, I think we can justify the annexation based on the city's need for more light industrial area. We know that, you know, time will eventually roll on, and, you know, future owners down the road may have, you know, other uses for that, and we want to encourage that type of business in our town and reap the benefits from that. So I'm, without a big glaring red light, you know, reason that we shouldn't do this, I have no objection to the annexation, and I would also vote yes on the, like you said, with the addition of the comments into the record.
Okay, let's look at the, everyone's had a comment here. Let's look at the possibilities here for the audience. One is to approve the applications and first consideration of ordinance 1056. Second is to approve the applications and the first consideration of the ordinance with modifications. Third, approve the implication for annexation, annexations, excuse me, but not the comprehensive plan amendment and direct staff to modify the ordinance. Four, deny the applications. Five, continue the hearing. Six, close the hearing but keep the record open. Six, close the hearing but keep the record open. Or seven, close the hearing and record the record and continue the deliberation to the next meeting. So lots and lots of possibilities here. What would the council like to do? Somebody like to offer a motion? Are we ready to move in that direction?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the applications of James and Jolene Cruther, land use file number 11-06/22 for annexation and comprehensive plan amendment and assign light industrial zoning to the property by enacting ordinance number 1056 to include the public comment in the findings and direct staff to incorporate changes into the ordinances before the ordinances presented to the city council for the second consideration.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second to approve option number one, which is approve the applications at first consideration of ordinance 1056. Let's go to a vote. Ms. Recorder. I knew a family named Recorder. Probably not the same one.
Not related, no.
Probably not the same one. Go ahead, please.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Nope.
Counselor Hook?
Counselor Hook, you guys abstaining?
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one abstaining, and one no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what do I have to do?
No, because we're not done, no closing statement is appropriate. We'll be back at your next meeting to finalize this.
Yes, we will. So I don't need to read the?
That's correct.
The last part, we'll be back.
Look what I saved you.
We'll be back. There's a line in a movie with a guy speaking awkward English. "I'll be back." I don't know who that was. Anyway, all right, thank you, folks. And on the general business, ordinance number 1057, illicit discharge detection and elimination code updates. Mr. Ludwig, good morning, afternoon, evening?
Good morning, afternoon, and evening, Your Honor and members of the council. I was, I was here a few weeks ago just giving you a fair warning that I'd be bringing this before you. This is a code, well, first of all, I'm going to do a little background information here. As part of a watershed approach to water quality problems, the state of Oregon developed a total maximum daily load, a TMDL, for water quality management of river, of water bodies in the state. And in doing so, the Willamette River Basin was developed in 2006. The city of Staton is listed as a designated management agency of our area because we are surrounded by Mill Creek and the North Saniam River, which both dump into the Willamette River, and we're a part of their, that basin. And as such, we are required to develop our own TMDL plan and our strategies for those creeks, the creek and North Saniam River. And part of the TMDL is a matrix, and I believe I attached that matrix to this staff report. But in that matrix, you develop management strategies to reduce temperature, mercury, and bacteria that are listed in the TMDL. We have ongoing strategies that have been selected as part of the plan to fill gaps and specific implementation dates as chosen by the city according to the resources available, meaning money, how much money we have to enact some of these strategies. These strategies, along with the benchmarks and scheduled, are summarized in the enclosed matrix. We've been doing this now for probably 10 years. In 2018, we had a five-year review of our TMDL plan, and we created new strategies and benchmarks with DEQ, and one of them is item 29, which recommends formalizing an illicit discharge and elimination program in the city, and in doing so, adopting that as part of our municipal code. Tonight, that code has been developed. That code is in the form of ordinance 1057, which will establish chapter 1336, illicit discharge detection and elimination in the state municipal code. Once adopted, the code will identify and prohibit non-stormwater discharges into our stormwater system and outline appropriate enforcement procedures and actions to ensure compliance of this code. It will define a range of illicit discharges, including those discharges that are conditionally allowed. In that code that is attached to the staff report, it outlines these, what's prohibited and what is not, and what is allowed. And so the staff recommends you pass this ordinance. We need this, DEQ is requiring us to do this. It's part of our TMDL plan that we filed with the state, and it's before you this evening to review, and I'll take any questions that you have regarding this code or anything else to do with the TMDL.
Thank you, for now. Is there any public comment? I hear mumblings, whisperings?
It's not a hearing, so I guess, I don't know if we're opening that up to everybody or not. I just want to make that point, though.
Lance, under council discussion now. What other heavy metals are we worried about other than mercury? And where do we get mercury in our water?
Well, it's a naturally occurring substance.
Okay. Are there?
That's why we clean our catch basins out every year. We collect, you know, every catch basin that we have, it collects sediment. Sediment from storm drainage rolls down our gutters, rolls right into the catch basins. There's grit there. If we don't have sumps in our catch basins, it rolls right out to the river and onward, and it gets into our fish. We eat the fish, and then we complete our kits, so that's one of the reasons.
I understand that, but we have, have we had reports of measurable amounts of mercury?
We test for it because of this TMDL plan that we created, you know, 12 years ago. We test for it on a monthly basis.
Do we?
Yeah.
I bet that engine will run faster if you just step on it a little bit harder. Have we got, I guess I'm curious about, we got measurable amounts of mercury?
I wouldn't say, you know, we, again, we've been doing this for 12 years. I think that we've had some hits that were, they were reasonably high, and again, they're natural occurring, so depending on runoff and things like that and where it's located, we've had areas in town that are measurable but not above the limits.
Huh, interesting. Okay. How about other heavy metals?
Well, we have lead.
Okay, expect that. Arsenic?
There is a bit, a little bit of that. It's all in our TMDL plan. I, we, I bring that to council annually. All these limits and what we detect for that year are in that report that we submit to DEQ. Better off to top my head, I couldn't tell you the numbers for each because I have a few other things to do besides memorize the numbers. When I was younger, I would do it.
And you get interrupted about every other morning while you're working with somebody that stops in to bother you about something, don't you?
Yeah, but I enjoy those chats.
You just brush him off, though. Okay, thank you, Lance. Questions or thoughts?
I think you stated this last time, Lance, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
I think you said this last time, but this, adding this to the code gives us some additional enforcement power, is that correct?
Yes, it does. We are constantly out there looking for this, regardless of the code or not. I mean, we TV our lines, our sanitary and our sanitary lines every year, and some of our storm lines, we clean our storm lines, we clean our catch basins, our pollution control manholes, just to meet our TMDL requirements, and one of the reasons is so we can find illegal connections, things like that, and that's what we're looking for. This just puts it into code so we can enforce if we find something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm ready to offer a motion. I'll offer a motion to adopt ordinance 1057 as presented.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1057. Is there any other discussion, please? All right. Could we have a poll of council, please?
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Counselor Hook is yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I won't have to bring it back before you now, thanks.
Thank you, Lance.
All right, ordinance, next item of business is ordinance number 1058, declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. Staff report.
So this is actually me, and this goes hand in hand with your next agenda item, which is the resolution. And basically, the psilocybin product manufacturers and service centers was, service center operators was approved by the Oregon voters in 2020. The Oregon Health Authority is working on rules. They will begin issuing licenses in January, even though they don't have the rules fully developed yet. They will begin issuing licenses in January unless a local jurisdiction has passed an ordinance prohibiting it and referring it to the voters at a general election. So the next general election upcoming is November of 2022. If we do not, if we wanted to prohibit these in the city and refer it to the voters, and we did not get it in time for the 2022 election, it wouldn't go to the voters until 2024. So basically, this ordinance would prohibit it, and then the next action, which is the resolution that you would be considering if you do pass this ordinance, would basically refer it to the voters. According to the, your rules, you pass ordinances in two hearings unless it's unanimous. I know that you just passed this past one, and there wasn't really discussion of whether or not it's unanimous or not. Our city attorney actually recommended a motion to more formally decide to do it in a single motion with unanimous approval, and then if that's passed, then you would actually take the action. That may not be necessary for your rules, but out of an abundance of caution, if that is what is decided, I would recommend doing that, just so that there's no legal hiccup or question about that. If you choose not to adopt it in one meeting, or choose not to adopt it, that's a different path, but if you choose not to adopt it in one meeting, then you would either need to do a special meeting between now and the 18th, the Friday, or we would bring it back at the next meeting, and then it would not go into effect, it would not be referred to the voters until 2024. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
In that, in that scenario, Julia, if it, if it didn't get referred until 2024, this first ordinance, 1058, if that was like a temporary, would that, would that hold until just January, or would that hold until 2024?
That is the part that is not totally clear or known. When you read the rules, OHA, basically, it says that once an ordinance prohibiting it is adopted, they will not issue licenses until the next general election. So the way I understand it, and the city attorney has said, that that is a very real possibility that they would honor that and not issue licenses until 2024 until it goes to the voters, but because it's new, it's not tested, it's gray, if you want to refer it to the voters, it would be recommended that you try to do it in one night if possible. If not, then we will test whether or not they, whether or not it will happen the way it is written. Does that make sense?
Yes, and then, Mr. Mayor, just for another clarifying question, the first ordinance is us banning it until it can go, until the voters can decide, the voters in Staton can decide what they want to do with it, and then this resolution, the second thing that we're going to be voting on or talking about is actually saying, hey, this is going to go to the voters.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
What is a psilocybin service center?
So, still, as I understand it, so psilocybin is also commonly referred to as mushrooms, and my understanding is, is that a service center, you would go to the service center, purchase your psilocybin, take it there with somebody that is there to walk you through whatever journey you go on mentally. It is, yes, but my, my understanding also is that it's not necessarily a licensed counselor. They do have to be licensed, but the, it's not a, somebody that has a master's in social work or something like that, or a counseling degree, so. So that is a service, that is what a service center is.
Got it, thank you.
My cousin Jim's been flying for years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Julia, do you know, when it comes to elections, what the percentage was or what happened in Marion County?
Oh, gosh, I did look this up, and I meant to write down the numbers. I do not have them off the top of my head. I do know that it was not approved in Marion, in the city of Staton. The city of Staton voters did not approve the service centers and the manufacturers. I don't know how close it was, but I do know that it did not pass here.
Thank you.
That one step, excuse me, Julia, passed in Marion County but not in Staton?
It did not pass in Staton. I do not believe it passed in Marion County, but I'm not 100% positive of that. And when I say it did not pass, I mean that the voters in Staton did not support these service centers and manufacturers to be allowed.
Mr. Mayor? One more question. Julia, do you know if Sublimity passed their word notes on Monday?
They did, yes, I called, and they can.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you just clarify, Julia, on if every city, if we know if like every city is going for with an ordinance like this, is this something that, like, who decided to bring this ordinance particularly forward if we're going to try and get this to the voters also?
So not every city in Oregon is going forward. Many cities in Oregon are going forward. I pulled this together because if we wanted to get on the 2022 election, we would need to pass it this evening. If you choose not to pass it this evening, that is completely a choice, but I didn't want to miss that opportunity.
Let me clarify, I think I wasn't clear, I'm sorry. For the ban portion of it, 1058, not the part that gets it to the voters, but the part that's the ban, like, why did we bring that forward when we could just send it straight to the voters?
You have to pass the ordinance banning it in order to refer it to the voters? That's the way the, my understanding is.
Got it, I probably misunderstood that, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions and thoughts? Go ahead, please.
Just a, just a general comment that I'd mentioned in the beginning that I had spoken to several members of the community about this subject, and they were all in favor of bringing it to the voters of Staton, believing, like Julia said, that Staton did not want these facilities in our community, so I would like to honor that. Honor bringing it forward to have a vote on it.
Same, Mr. Mayor. Same, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was just echoing what Counselor Ort said.
Okay. I certainly agree. Okay, are we close to a decision on this? Other comments and thoughts? Ordinance number 1058, declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a comment from me. So it looks like this is going to require this to be unanimous. I am going to be a no on this. I am not in the habit of moralizing any specific substance when we, as a society, allow, legalize, and consume as much alcohol as we do. I don't see personally the difference, and I know personally people that have benefited greatly from psilocybin use. I don't believe there should be a ban. I understand there's probably the majority in this town that do, but I'm here, and that's the way I look at it, and so I will be a no on this ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor, I mean, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor, just remember that you represent the community, and everything that was just articulated to you is your representation of what you're doing. This has nothing to do with personal morals. It's what the will of the people are asking us to do.
I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, hello.
Julia, can, can we explain a little bit more again, why, like, why there is a requirement that we're banning it prior to just sending it to, like, why, why can't we just send it to the voters without an actual ban on it? That's where I'm, I'm just really having a hard time connecting, that there's no other option for us to move this, for the voters to vote on, without us actually banning, like, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the ban portion of it. I'm not uncomfortable with having our voters vote on it. I believe that we should be representing what the people want, and that we should be bringing something forward for them to vote on, something like this. But placing the ban on it when the voters have already voted in the state of Oregon is, is strange to me, that we're like slamming a ban down, and there's no workaround of that, of still delivering it to the voters to vote on.
So, your ban doesn't mean anything until the voters vote on it. So you, my understanding is, you have to vote to ban it, and then it goes to the voters. It doesn't, it's not banned until the voters approve the ban. It's the same as it was with the cannabis, that you don't have the ability to ban it until the voters agree with you. So it's a sort of, it's a two-step action that is required, where you take the action to ban it, but then you refer it to the voters to say, we agree or not. If the voters do not agree, it is not banned.
Right. So I think where, where I feel like there's a little misrepresentation, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is that this isn't the only option of getting it banned. A community member could easily go get a petition and have signatures collected to do a measure to ban it within the city of Staton, isn't that correct?
Yes, and the council could at any point going forward, adopt a ban and refer it to the voters. It's, it's the referral of the voters and the approval of, by the voters that actually effectively bans it, but the action to get it to the voters by the city is banning it and referring it to the voters. Okay. All right, we are back.
Are we back?
Yeah, Counselor Hook, we're back. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, can someone let me know where you guys didn't hear me, like, where it cut off?
No, it's, we just quit, and we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I think that you were making the, the state, you were questioning the ordinance versus just referring it to the, the voters.
Right. I'm not sure where your guys' computer crashed, and hopefully we can have that plugged in going forward. So what I, what I was trying to say, and I don't know where it cut off, is I don't understand why we are putting a ban down when there was no one that showed up for public comment to state that they desired a ban down. If this is about, you know, the voters desiring something, I believe that, that voters should get together and put a measure down for something to be banned, to bring something, to bring something to the council saying that they desire a ban. I know that in the past, we've had some major issues when we put bans down for things, and I would not like to repeat history for that. Also, I have to regain my, my thoughts here, because I, oh, one of the things that I stated also was, this would have been really great to have our city attorney here for, because I, I feel like there's a little bit of a misrepresentation of what is, you know, that this was the only route that, that could be gone down for this psilocybin ban. Some community education of, hey, if you guys would like to have something on a ballot, here are the steps that you could go to, to do that. We are representing the people that are here in Staton, but the thing is that I don't believe that the, the Staton voters didn't vote to ban psilocybin. They didn't vote to ban it in our community, they voted as a statewide option. So I really think that that's something that we should allow the voters to have control over and not make that decision for them. I'm all for putting it on the ballot, I'm not all for putting a ban down that the voters didn't ask for.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, counsel.
Let me see if I can understand this a little bit more. I think we need to change the word ban to pause, and it's a pause from OHA giving us any business in Staton a license, right, to open one of these facilities until the voters have a chance to vote on it?
In effect, yes. My understanding, and, and this was the staff report, the ordinance, the ordinance was actually prepared by the city attorney, the staff report was reviewed and prepared by the city attorney. Essentially, you're referring an ordinance to the voters. You have to have an ordinance that is passed in order to refer it to the voters. So that is, that is the option. What, the League of Oregon Cities has sort of, there's two paths. Most jurisdictions that are doing something are doing the path that is in front of you this evening. You could do a moratorium, a two, an ordinance declaring a two-year moratorium and referring that to the voters. That would just, basically, if they, if it goes to the voters and they pass it, it just, it's a two-year moratorium, and it doesn't permanently ban it. So this path is, if they're going to approve it, a ban, they might as well approve the ban. Or you could do nothing, that is certainly an option. We will also be working on code language in the event that it, a ban by the voters does not get passed, so that there's still measures in place for time, place, manner of, of those facilities. So there are options, yes. If you want to refer this to the voters for the November 2022 election, you essentially need to adopt an ordinance that is then referred to the voters. So that's why we have to do an ordinance that is doing what we're doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Patty?
This is Counselor, yes. Julia, what happens if we don't pass that ordinance tonight?
So if you do not pass that ordinance tonight, and you do not have a special election, so if there is not a majority of, if there's not a unanimous decision by council, and there is not a special meeting between now and the end of the week, then, and regardless of whether or not this ban passes, then it will not get on to the November 2022 election.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to point out to the other counselors.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor Hook.
Yes.
So I definitely don't like to be feeling like I'm being strong-armed into a decision, and that's what it feels like this evening, because it feels like we can't make edits to this? Is that, is that what we're seeing? Because a moratorium, while, you know, these laws are figured out with the state of Oregon and things like that, sounds more like something that I could definitely get behind, because there, it is a new concept. And, like, it's, it's a new thing that we're bringing into the state. So I understand that maybe we don't want to dip our toes into that entire realm right now, where things are being ironed out. So correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we can't make edits to change it into a, a moratorium, just a, a pause on this and put that to voters, that we are going to pause on allowing this into our community? Just, it's a little bit, it just sounds different than a ban, because it's not that, I don't, I don't feel like we should be setting the precedent of an actual ban on this. It's more of like, we're not ready for this quite yet, because the state of Oregon isn't ready for this quite yet.
There, I'm, I'm just, I want to look at the League of Oregon Cities legislation on this, and make sure that there isn't a major change in the ordinance. If you did, you'd still have to pass it unanimously tonight, and it, in order to get on the November 2022 ballot, but I need to look at the, the legislation and see if it's just a simple word and where that is. So if you guys want to continue talking.
Julia, one other question.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't get it on the November 2022 election. So then it goes to January of '23. OHA comes out.
Twenty, oh, sorry.
Yeah, OHA comes out and grants licenses, whatever you want to call it, to vendors within the community. They set up shop wherever they feel like, across the street from the school, downtown, wherever these folks feel like. And then we wait until 2024 to address it again?
Hopefully, we would, again, also have put together some code language that would regulate that a little bit more in the event that we do not have something that prohibits OHA from issuing licenses. So if, if we develop code language between now and the end of December that is adopted, then that would be in effect, so you wouldn't necessarily have it in locations you don't want it.
Right, that's just to mitigate the locations.
Yeah. Are there other questions while I'm looking?
Well, one of the questions probably should be, how much do, down in our heart of hearts, do we trust OHA to make the best decisions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
That's just speculation on my part.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Go ahead.
Thank you. One thing that I was wanting to ask Julia is, is it feasible for the staff to come up with regulations that would match that, similar or, similar to what we already have down for other controlled substances, between now and before OHA would come out with a decision in January? And, second part is, does that, does getting that stuff done, those ordinances done, help us with, like, I think it's called home rule?
I'm not sure I'm tracking the second part of the question, but I, I think it, it is feasible that we could do something similar to what we have in, with other controlled substances, but that means that you would all have to, or at least the majority of you would have to agree, that that's the way we would want to control it, so there might be more conversations about that. And then, what was the second part of your question about home rule?
So I'm not an expert on home rule, but I was, I'm under the impression that if we have something down before the state of Oregon makes a law on it, then we get, again, I'm not, this is why it'd be great to have the city attorney here for something like psilocybin conversations, that home rule would then, like, supersede something that the state of Oregon had put down since we had it down, like, first. Is, I don't understand it completely, that's why I would love to have a city attorney or some staff member that knows more about it.
Yeah, because this was adopted by the voters of Oregon, we, we can't pass something that's going to supersede unless we do it following the process that we're following, which is an ordinance and referring it to the voters. That's the way it was laid out in the, the law that was adopted by, by the voters. So I, I'm not sure if I'm tracking entirely what you're saying, but, but we can't, we can't put something on the books other than time, place, manner, regulations, which is allowed by the law. I'm not sure if I'm tracking what your, is that, I'm not sure if I'm tracking what your question was.
And Julia, all of this was in consultation with the city attorney, so.
Yes. So, yeah, just so you know, so the League of Oregon Cities has a packet of information that has, that has a draft ballot measure, draft ordinance for both a ban and a two-year moratorium. Basically, we followed that, the city attorney followed that, the city attorney drafted this and gave this to us. So all of what's in front of you was in consultation with the city attorney. In looking at the, the two-year moratorium in the League of Oregon Cities draft ordinance packet, it looks like really the only difference is changing it from an ordinance declaring a ban to an ordinance declaring a temporary ban. So that is really the only change, although I, because that's not the title of what this ordinance was, it might, I mean, and I don't know if it would pass unanimously anyways, and it would still have to pass this evening, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
It's, it is apparent to me that we're not going to have a unanimous vote on the ban, but if we did a moratorium, would that be a little bit more palatable? So, Julia, just, I'm going to reiterate what you're saying. We can't just, we have to give the voters something to vote yes or no on, and so that's what this first one is, is, you're saying no. Okay, so what I'm understanding is, we have to give them something to vote on, so we say, we're going to declare a ban or a moratorium, and then that's what we bring to them and say, is this what you want? Yes or no?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Can we not change this to a 90-day ban, temporary ban? This just, and because the election's in, like, 90-ish days or less, can we not have it be a ban until the election results are finalized and everything is, is worked out with, with elections?
The ban is what is referred to the voters, so whatever you're referring to the voters is, that, that is the ban. So you're either referring to the voters a permanent ban, a two-year moratorium, or you're not referring it to the voters.
The moratorium, that's what I'm, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I believe when, when we were first, I, I was asking a clarifying question, so I think that there might be some confusion with what I said, because I thought that this first one was us temporarily banning it until it went to the voters, but that's not the case. What it is, is the language for the voters to vote on is the first one. So it's either we're going to ban it, or it's going to be a two-year moratorium, or however long moratorium that we want, so that's the language. And then the second one, the resolution, is, we're going to take this ordinance that we just voted on, and that's what the voters are going to be voting on.
Yeah, essentially, the resolution is, is referring the ordinance to the voters and has the ballot title in the explanatory statement. That's what the resolution is. So the, really, the decision that's before you really is, do So really, the decision that's before you really is, do we want to put a ban to the voters, which requires you to adopt an ordinance, either a full ban or a two-year moratorium, or again, nothing. At any point from here going forward, council could take similar action. So you could do this in a month, you could do this in a year. And then, basically, when you pass an ordinance, from what I have read in the rules and OHA documentation, OHA will not issue licenses until a vote at the next general election. So that's why the 2022 is sort of the next general election. After that, it would be 2024.
But only if we take action on this tonight.
If only if you take action on it tonight, would it go to 2022. Correct?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So here's what I could get behind for a vote, which I think that we should really take note as to how important it is to have a city attorney at our meetings, and that that should be at the top of our list of fixing, so that we can have that here. I could get behind submitting a two-year moratorium that would allow two years for community members to then come forward and do a permanent ban, if that is what they so desire to do in the general 2024 election. That would also give Oregon Health Authority time to get together their own rules and laws on this new thing that's going on, and it would give comfort to us, probably, and our community members, that they, that they would know that things would not just be setting up shop when there weren't good regulations and laws laid out yet on it. A straight-up ban that's permanent, that's not something that I'm willing to do without a city attorney here able to negotiate what the wording is on there for us to vote on tonight.
I don't know. Let's try to do something with this tonight, if we can. Yeah?
Are we in council decision yet, or are we still in discussion?
No, we're kind of in a discussion.
Well, I'm going to make a motion then, and, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt ordinance 1058. Take a vote on it.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Ordinance 1058, declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. Any more discussion? Ms. Recorder, would you poll the council, please?
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Hook?
No.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
So because it did not pass unanimously, your rules require that there be a second reading. So then, I guess, I assume that we'll just go to the next council meeting, and then we will deal with that, and it would be something that would go on the, if it is passed, it would go on the 2024 ballot. And then, the resolution that's in front of you cannot be considered this evening, because the ordinance is not passed yet thoroughly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can we please have the city attorney at our next meeting when we speak about this, please?
Well, we can try. There a compelling reason, please?
Because of the fact that we're going to try to ban something.
Well, not to argue, but what would we get beside more discussion along the same lines that we've had tonight?
We could actually have changes made to it, if we needed to do that.
Okay. Let's take that one under advisement, if we can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I mean, I have been an advocate in wanting our city attorney here for several of our meetings that we have questions about. So I'm, I mean, I would second Counselor Hook's request to have our city attorney here.
Okay, we'll take it under advisement. It's good. Thank you. How about resolution 1042? What do we do with that, then? Nothing?
So, yeah, I would recommend tabling that until a decision is made on the ordinance.
Let's table that if we can, and if everyone's okay with that. Let's go to dwellings as part of a live-work unit. Informational, Dan?
You're looking at me.
Is my staff report next to the cabinet? Is there a package?
Um...
I don't believe it is.
Oh.
So that's not on the agenda?
Mayor, microphone, please.
And just to clarify, so I asked Dan to come and share this. This will be coming in front of you for an actual hearing, so it's really just to kind of give you an update on kind of conversations that have had, that have happened, and conversations with the Planning Commission. So it's not absolutely necessary that you have it in front of you. It would make life easier.
This is an informational report. Oh, we lost.
She left on her own.
So I can proceed, if it's at the council's pleasure?
You got a sick one at home?
There it is. Okay, we're ready, we're live. So you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is Ms. Ort going to join us?
She apparently didn't leave.
Okay. This is just informational, right?
This is just informational. There is no decision that needs to be made. It's just to let you know what the status of this issue is. It's the last time we discussed it back in June.
Okay. What is the status?
So you may recall that at your June, late, mid-June meeting, where you discussed a zone change amendment that was necessitated because of a disagreement over the interpretation of the code as to what constituted a dwelling in a live-work unit, you said you wanted to see this come back for discussion. At that same time, the Planning Commission had already started work on a code amendment. They discussed it at their end-of-June meeting and scheduled a public hearing for their August 20, today's the 15th, August 29th, meeting. And so the code amendment, as posted, would do, again, the intent is to distinguish between what's the difference between a dwelling in a live-work unit, which is permitted in the commercial and industrial zones, and downtown zones, and what's a single-family dwelling in which someone has a home occupation, which is permitted in the residential zones, but not in the commercial, industrial, and downtown zones.
That house on Marion Street?
That was, that was the property that caused the disagreement, but you changed the zoning and made it residential. And just today, I issued a change-of-use permit from commercial to single-family dwelling for that property.
Go ahead.
So when this issue was brought to the Planning Commission in April, asking for their interpretation, their response was, we can't interpret this, we need, the code needs to be clarified. And so that's what these amendments do. So they specify that, and again, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going off of memory here, and I may not hit every fine point, but they specify that in order to be considered a live-work unit, the commercial space needs to be on the ground floor, and needs to be directly accessible from the outside, without going through the residence. So you walk in the, quote, "front door," it's a storefront. You walk in the front door, and you're in the commercial space, without having to go through someone's living room or bedroom. Secondly, that the dwelling, the residential portion, may not take up more than 50% of the total floor area. Just as a comparison, in a home occupation, in a single-family residence, the code says, the business use may not take up more than 50% of the floor area. Thirdly, all of the life safety codes, fire safety codes, need to be met, and that's because, depending on the type of business use that's going on, you may need fire separation walls between commercial and residential use. And the fourth provision clarifies that the off-street parking requirement is based on either the commercial use or the residential use, but you don't have to meet both. So that's my recollection of what the amendment does. It is scheduled for a public hearing on August 29th. Assuming that the Planning Commission will be passing it on to you, it is likely to be on your agenda for the September 19th meeting. Any questions, concerns? You'll have a stab at it when it comes before you, if you think it should be 60% or 40% instead of 50%, but that's the gist of where the Planning Commission wanted to go.
Thank you, Dan.
No, thank you, Dan. That was clear and concise. Thank you. Understood.
Communications from city staff?
It is on the city website.
So I will have a, just, I'll start with mine, and then I'll invite Chief up. So just, I think you guys all know, but I moved this weekend. It went a little bit longer than I had hoped. I am in my house. Everything is on my property. I cannot tell you where everything is, but we're working on it. And then, just a reminder, if you haven't filled out the doodle poll for the work session on homelessness, please do that. I'd like to try to get that firmly scheduled by the end of this week, if possible, so that we can get that going. And then, Chief is going to just come and share his dashboard that he's been working on, walk you through it, and see if you guys see what you think about it. So I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening. So, can everybody see it? That's a ways off, sort of. Okay, yeah, we'll see if we can get it a little better for you. There we go. So, as you guys know, every month we do a report. Report goes out and onto the website about, you know, our various night rush crimes that we're reporting and stuff. And I thought they're just a better way of actually picturing the police department for everybody to look at, and just real nice glance, see what you have. So what we've done is put together, basically, a snapshot. And what we're looking at here is the reported crimes that come into us under Class A, Class B offenses. This is what we do when we're doing a police report, and this gets reported to the FBI through the state of Oregon. So you can see is, what happened in July of 2021, under person crimes, we had six. July of 2022, we had five. So we had a very small decrease. Then you look at the year-to-date, we had 31 year-to-date. Last year, this year we have 38. So we're actually up. So what this does is start showing you different trends of what's going on within the community. These are those types of calls of service that we're getting. And it's just a really nice, quick glance. You can look at sex offenses, burglaries, as you can see. Under property crimes, it's actually even for the month of July, but you see we're down a little bit for, in the year. So, again, one thing to realize, too, is that it doesn't take much of a percentage change to make a big drop or a big increase very quickly on this, but it just gives you a nice little glance at it. You can look at thefts as you go through the report. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, because that's not what I was going to do tonight, just give you an overview of it. If you go down to societal crimes, those are the things that we, the officers are, most of the time, we're dealing with proactive stuff. DUI is proactive. They're hopefully not showing up DUI crashes. That means we're too late. We want to try to get ahead of those things. As you can see, this year alone, we're up 86%. The officers are just very diligent in doing our DUI enforcement. Part of that, too, is some more specialized training for one of our officers. So we've already had 54 arrests this year alone for DUI. It goes into disorderly conduct. Other offenses could be, like harassment, which could be, I push somebody, or offensive touching, that kind of thing. So they're different. As you go down below that, you look at calls for dispatch calls and self-initiated calls. Dispatch calls are what come through dispatch. That's the citizen or somebody has called us up and said, hey, I want to talk to a police officer. If you look down below that, you're looking at self-initiated. Self-initiated or simply that, that's what the officers are doing themselves when they have their downtime. So they're out looking for whatever issues are at hand, or doing more follow-ups, those type of calls. So those are considered self-initiated. So you can see the different changes in that. If you go down, community concerns, we just sort of are grabbing different, various issues that come in through the community, as you see, we all see. And then, very bottom, the community outreach and events, things that we're doing are things that are upcoming in the next month. This is always a month behind, so it just sort of gives you that nice little idea of what's happening. We try to capture the different things the police departments are doing. This is page one. This is page one. This would be a page that we'd actually put on the website for the community to see. Any questions with page one? There's four pages in this. Okay, I'll move on. Page two. So page two is really looking at just our employee snapshot. That's looking at how many people we have. As you see right now, we're fully staffed. Even though we've got a lot of folks in training, we've got 13. I will say, as of Monday, our part-time staff member was hired, and she will start. So we will be 100% staff in our police department. So you'll see the next report, it'll be 100%. Then you also look at our operational opportunities, what's going on in our agency. So you can see we're like recruits in the academy. Those are people that are not on patrol. They're getting trained or in field training, or if they're on light duty, or if somebody's on administrative leave, or if we have somebody who's a veteran who's also out. So that'll actually then let you know how many people are actually operational for us to use throughout the police department in our 24/7 operation. Down below this is actually our budget. I get this from finance, and all we're doing is just inputting that information over so you can see where we're spending, if it's high or low. And you can actually look between the two years and see, are we, are we, you know, spending the same way? Or is there something a little higher or a little lower for each of those months? Question on that page. The next page that you're gonna have is actually more looking at dispatch calls for the last year per month. And so it sort of tells you where we're at and different trends. Like I said, the huge spike in night of '21, we had 355 that month. And you can sort of see how that flows. Down below that is the same months with self-initiated calls. And you will see that is officers out doing the various work. Those are the different, patrols in the park around here, traffic stops, field contacts, saying hi, those type of things when they radio out. Those are the things that are captured and we put on here. Then the next one is actually, the trend is a five-year trend. If you're looking at this, calls by month, so if you pull it down just a little farther, you're looking at each year from, for each, this month, from 2018 on through 2022, and then dispatch calls. So you see the self-initiated and the dispatch, and sort of see that trend of what we're doing over five years, what's happening within the community. That's, I think it's a little richer than what we've been able to provide in the past. The page two, I'd like to see page one and page three definitely be on the city website. Page two, the operational stuff, I'd like to see probably more internally. But I do know at this point in time, you don't receive the monthly report. Right now, you guys go to the website if you'd like to see that. If you'd like that change, that would be an option for you to have, and you could have this report every month. We try to produce it. The reason it didn't get to you sooner is I wanted to make sure we could do, there's a lot of data, again, grabbing here. And we want to make sure that we could consistently do this and accurately do that for you. So there wasn't a lot of changes. So it's taken several months of testing and making sure we're doing it right. So that is all I have on this. If there's questions, I'll gladly take them.
Question. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Do you get many reports or conversations with people that are, I don't know, tired of your dispatcher asking all the questions they do?
I think, yes, that's just been a, that's an industry standard. I think a lot of times people, they're, they have their criteria of the questions that they're required to ask as part of their policy and procedures. And sometimes people just want to get cut to the chase, but they have a certain way they want to do that, because they have to do that repetitively with different people who call in and different types of events. So they're trying to be very formatted in what they do, which actually makes them more efficient. So sometimes it feels like it's a lot, a lot of questions I'm having to answer for something basic, like, hey, I just want to talk to Dave.
Do you think they, do you think they take it personally when you tell them, "It's none of your business. I want to talk to the chief"?
I don't think so, sir, because they take complaints and they take people in all different types of emotional states all day long. I don't, it's not personal. They're just trying to do their job effectively, just like a police officer. We're just trying to do our jobs the right way.
You don't need my mother's wedding date and my grandmother's birthday. You don't need that.
Well, if they're asking those questions, and I, I'll talk with the director. I'm actually on the executive board, but I seriously doubt that any dispatcher is asking that. I think that's a little much, but, okay, I thought so. If not, I can take that. I'm on the executive board. I can actually change that if you'd like, if that's an issue. Any other questions? Is this something you like to see monthly in your personal reports?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think what I could do is include that when, you know, monthly as an addendum to the, the weekly reports. That would probably be the most efficient. Like, like Chief said, we probably don't want to tell the public how many officers are on light duty and things like that. So that will be just, just in your reports, but the rest of it will be up on the, the website as well.
And Counselor Hook, I'm sorry, I didn't look over to my left very far with the camera. I'm sorry. Did you have any questions for me at all?
I don't, but thank you so much. I have one consideration possibly. Instead of just month-to-month, like January 2021, or July 2021, July 2022, have you considered a 90-day so that the percentages don't look like 150% it would up? I could see someone looking at that number and being, when it was really just from two to five. It goes from two, and then it changes to five. Someone looking at that 150% and sort of leaping with that a little out of what might be a normal reaction.
I have a look at doing a 90-day, the 30-days there, and then the year-to-date. So really, you're looking at the whole year up to like July, you're seeing that whole number for both years, too. But I think it's just a comparison on the, on either side. But we could potentially look at like quarterly or, or
Yeah, like quarterly, or just removing that month one, and just looking at the year-to-date even.
Okay.
But thank you. It was, it was great. Thank you so much for doing all that.
You bet. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let everybody know, in attendance and the public at large, there is a couple vacant city council positions coming up. The deadline, I believe, is the 25th. I see nods. So if you're interested in doing this, it's, it's pretty rewarding to serve our community this way, and I encourage anyone interested in putting forward an application.
We're on, because I don't think, I don't think a microphone was on. I'm not sure where we're at right now.
What proposal?
She was asking what section of the agenda we're on, which is comments.
Communications from mayor and council. Have you got something?
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Counselor Hook. I'd like to share with the counselor, or with the council and the community a perspective to take. When I started on the council, we worked hard prior to COVID to make things more accessible. We passed some things that made it so that whether you, no matter what your economic status was, that you could find support in reimbursement for gas mileage or, or, you know, other options that we had put forward. And none of us that I know of have taken, taken advantage of that or needed to take advantage of that yet. But when I, when I was elected here, I was elected as a single mom. And one of the things that I have been very thankful for out of this COVID is the hybrid option. And I, I would like to share the perspective that lately it has felt as if being a single mom is a burden to the council and the city staff. And why I say that is I, as a counselor, cannot have an extra advantage than anyone else in the community when it comes to childcare and things like that, which is why sometimes I have to be here hybrid, be from my home over Zoom. I have been approached already in a way that I feel is not fair to the position that I hold, where I, I feel like I have been offered something that the other, that community members have not been offered, solutions to my childcare that I don't feel ethically I am able to take. And so I have asked, and I, I worked on this before COVID. I worked with Keith to try to bring childcare to our meetings for everyone so that anyone that was a parent that would like to come and do public comment and be there for the meeting could take advantage of the childcare. I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to be approached and asked if there's something that, that can be done for me specifically for childcare resolution. Now, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone here. I just want to say that I don't think it's appropriate. And I also feel as if it's not really single-parent friendly right now. I do believe that single parents should have a voice on the council and that anyone that desires to run for office should have an equal opportunity to be on the council. But I do ask that things like comments of, you know, when your microphone is on and you ask if I have a sick child or what my excuse is this week, really just not happen. It's disrespectful, and it further makes me feel unwelcome here as a counselor. So I do encourage community members to run for office, and thank you, Counselor Patty, for letting people know. I will be considering whether I, I run again because of how unwelcome it has felt recently. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything, anyone else? Anything else? Are we done for this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was thinking about this earlier. So whenever Jana comes up, if you're out there in Zoom land, I don't know if you still are. So whenever Jana comes up, they did a fantastic job with the summer reading program. But she always gets like the kudos and everything. And so I just want to like give a shout out to the rest of our staff because she gets the fun job, I feel like. I just want you to know that we appreciate all your stormwater and land use things. They're very riveting, and you are appreciated, guys. Thank you. All your reports. Riveting. Okay, sorry. That went a little far, right? Okay, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Anything else this evening? Let's go home then. Good night. Thank you.